Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the November regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners. We will start with a roll call.
Mr. DiMelio.
Present.
Mrs. Hall.
Here.
Mr. Siegel.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Mr. McGarrett.
Here.
Mr. Connell. I know Mr. Connell is in the building.
Yeah, he's here, but he's not here.
Mr. Wexler.
Here.
Mr. Heilmann.
Here.
And Mr. Oliva.
Here. We have the opening prayer by Reverend Noshan Bacallian from the Armenian Martyrs Church.
Let's pray. Dear God, before beginning the business before us this evening, we pause and turn our thoughts to you. In order to function as a community, we need your guidance. Help us to see ourselves as stewards of the work of this township and this society. Help us to listen well, focus on what matters, put aside selfish interests. Show us that we are workers, not masters, and help us to be faithful to our fellow workers and fellow residents. All that we are, all that we have ultimately belongs to you. We thank you for the opportunities we have to work, learn, care, and serve in Haverford Township. Bless the employees of this township, especially tonight bless this board and guide each member to be wise and responsible. In the season of Thanksgiving, help us to find ways to reach out with care and encouragement, especially to those in particular need or those who are experiencing loss. May the sounds of praise and thanks rise from our hearts to your ears. And on the eve of this Veterans Day, we offer special thanks for the men and women of this country who have given their strength and courage to serve in our armed forces. We pray that their work would also be guided by you, those who are serving today would be protected by you in the many places throughout the world that they are. Grant our leaders wisdom in these troubled times. Thank you, God, for trusting us with so much. With hearts of gratitude, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the mission of liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much, and we will begin with the township auditor update. Our auditor, Gary Schlapp.
I've reviewed the expenditures for the period commencing October 15, 2014, and ending November 10, 2014. I've raised certain questions and asked for certain substantiation. The questions were answered to my satisfaction. The substantiation documentation that I received was satisfactory, and therefore, in my opinion, there were no irregularities for the period in question. Thank you.
We'll begin with the Citizens Forum. I want to remind everyone to please keep it to three minutes. We have a lot of speakers this evening, so we want to make sure that we keep it to three minutes, okay? First, on Citizens Forum, Mike Levin. Dr. Levin?
Mr. Lee, I had presented to you, my address is 414 Mill Road, where we have lived for twenty, going on 26 years now. Come to have known that property quite well, as well as other properties in the area. I want to talk to you tonight about the parallel collector that's been proposed by the county of Engineers for Woodmere Way primarily and Ridgeway Road and two of Woodmere Park's subwatersheds. First, I want to, I want to ask you a question. I noticed that you have, you're proposing to borrow $12 million. I understand that this, my understanding is that that somehow is connected with the municipal building. I do, I, first of all, I question the figure because an additional $2 million were tacked on that at the meeting at which it was accepted as the first choice. I want to question first the $2 million that was added on, and second, I want to, I want to question you a bit about the, about test boring report for that site. I want to question you a bit about test boring report for that site because there are characteristics of that site that are very similar to the characteristics of soils that I'm mentioning tonight in connection with our property at 414 Mill, as well as a large number of other properties in Haverford Town, which are in Capability Class III, and Capability Class III is made land, it does not fit any particular soil type, it has buried soil types beneath it, beneath, beneath hill. That's, that's the first question I have. I'll, I'll get to the other later. Now, concerning that watershed, sub watershed at Mill Road, I've requested an open records review of all documents that have been submitted because answers to my questions concerning how did these, what were these calculations, and where are they? There has been no answer to that besides repeated requests that I have made. So, I'm going to ask for all, I have asked for all of those records for review purposes.
All right, Dr. Levin, that was three minutes, okay?
Yes.
Okay, we can give you another three minutes in the, in the...
Would be coherent to go with the three minutes now.
You can use your three minutes, but then you can't use it at the, the other part on the agenda items, okay?
All right. I've given you a draft copy of the report, which I think Mr. Gentili has distributed to you, and tonight I'm giving you the summary of that report as it stands right now, and I'm indicating to you that the reports that the engineer has made are incomplete, there are no calculations, there are no soil water characteristics, there's not even a soil identification, there are no procedures for road construction, and my belief is that water intrusion is going to take place, that there will be uneven settlement as a result. I cannot even define how downspouts are, are, are put onto the public lands or not in the entire Woodmere Park area. And as I travel those roads, looking for places where they have gone into the, into the cartway, I find probably less than 5% of the, of the structures of the homes have done, have brought them to the road. They empty onto the properties close to the buildings, and when they do that, it gets into the building itself. The slope for that Mill Road collector, as I look at Mill Road from the high school entrance to Arlington Road, is less than 1% slope, in fact, it goes uphill at the point that it, that it reaches the 400 block of Mill Road. So either that pipe is going to be, is going to be buried very deep, or it's not going to flow well, or both. So, I wish to include by saying that we're empathetic with the residents. We have proposed additional solutions to this problem, the residents who have been flooded in the past, but we're pushing back against them because their water problems shouldn't become ours. It is, that is both for an individual, and similarly, it's, it has been used in international affairs when it, when it was claimed that one country should not do things at the expense of another, as President Obama is in China right now. In summary, unless the, unless there's a different solution, even after looking at this information, we will file a letter of intent to pursue legal action with you in the event that you choose the Mill Road collector. Thank you, Mr. Oliva.
Welcome, Dr. Levin. I'm Andrea Smith.
Andrea E. Smith, 102 Landmark Road. Good evening, Commissioners. We're here before you again on the subject of 101 Tenby Road, but today we come before you in a very different way than we have before. As you all have supplemental packets that I've provided you for your reference, you'll notice that there's four main areas that we've discovered in reference to 101 Tenby. The first, and perhaps one of the most important, are deed restrictions. We found several deed restrictions on this property that only allow one building to be built, and it references two lots that were seen as one. And you can go through the, the deeds that I've provided you. I've provided you four, we do have all of them. And the second part that I would like to discuss is the historic commission submission that we've done, to the historic commission to hopefully have 101 Tenby be a historic resource, because we found enough information on it that it's got a historic character, which is the second part of your supplemental that I've provided you. And it shows the background of Dr. Kalmbach, who I referenced at our last meeting, and we found more information on him. Also, we found that Lanark was a planned community, and also the architects that worked on these homes also worked on 101 Tenby, and therefore, it mirrors in a lot of ways, and actually, in some cases, has more information than others that are listed on the historical or resource list. The third concern are environmental concerns. The DEP, EPA, and OSHA all have concerns regarding this property. The DEP has been out to the property and would like to come out again, and they have concerns about any potential demolition that might occur. And the EPA also has concerns regarding air quality, and OSHA has concerns if there would ever be a demolition on that site, how that's done because of a lot of the issues that have been happening with demolitions around the Philadelphia area. And one of my neighbors will cover that in, more in depth, but that is your third supplemental that gives specific guidelines as to what their concerns are, and hopefully, they are looking to get involved and come out on site again, and they're actually so concerned they've reached out to Harrisburg on this matter. And we'll be able to provide more information in the coming weeks. And also, the fourth part is the way that some of the trees were taken off the property prior to the settlement of, prior to the official purchase of that property. Unfortunately, some trees were taken down, and it circumvented the shade tree commission process, and also, another neighbor will speak to that. But I think one of the main focuses is if you look at the deed restrictions, it clearly states one property. I've tried to highlight for you, as I know some of these deeds are very old and they're difficult to read, so I ask for your patience, but I've tried to highlight the pertinent areas for you so that you can see. So, with these issues, what we would really like to ask overall is that we hold off, especially with Lori not being here, Lori would have not been here today, we'd like the commission to help us hold off on any decision, any kind of building or demolition decisions, until some of these matters are put to rest. We're certainly not asking for anything that's Sisyphean, but rather thorough, not just for our sake, but for the sake of the builder, so that we know where we stand and all these very serious concerns are addressed. Thank you so much.
Mr. President, I didn't realize that at the last meeting, but I just want to, for the record, anything with regard to that property, I have a professional conflict. I'll submit a statement to the solicitor on that. The same also with the Panmuir Road, so that I won't participate, I don't, I just, but I wanted that to be disclosed, and I didn't realize that at the last meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Gene Angel, 101 Tenby.
Gene Angel from 25 Tenby Road. I want to speak as a member of the Shade Tree Commission regarding the trees removed from the property. The Shade Tree ordinance protects tree cover in the township in a number of ways. It primarily protects street trees and trees on private lots during construction. The Shade Tree Commission reviews new development plans and makes sure that the builder is complying with certain standards and replacing trees that are removed. Small trees are replaced on a 1 to 12-inch ratio, where a 12, 24-inch tree would be replaced with a 2-inch caliber tree. Trees 24 inches or larger are replaced on a 1 to 1-inch ratio for the following reasons. Large species trees enhance the environment exponentially over smaller varieties. Every leaf on a tree creates oxygen and filters pollutants in the air. Each foot of shade-producing canopy reduces the work of air conditioners in the summer. Each inch of root mass improves stormwater management and the filtration of waterborne pollutants. In addition to environmental benefits, the grandeur of large trees creates a sense of history and place for the township, enhancing the quality of life and raising property values. In my experience, developers sometimes try to circumvent the Shade Tree Commission ordinance by having the sellers take trees down before settlement, thus avoiding the replacement of those trees. Rich Fuller is the first developer who actually verbalized this desire to me. Rich paid for an arborist to look at the trees on the property in September, which included a 67-inch diameter beech tree and a 36-inch diameter white pine. The arborist determined that the trees were a hazard and immediate removal was necessary. I told Rick that they needed a permit to take the trees down. He asked if the seller took them down, would they be counted in the replacement inches? Drudgingly, I told him the truth, which is no. This is a loophole that I reported to the Commissioners in March 2012. Rich paid for the arborist report. Rich, not the owner, submitted the tree removal permit. Neighbors also heard Rich discussing payment with the tree removal company as the trees were being removed. Were these trees not removed by the builder as part of his new development plan? The beech tree was majestic, and while it did show signs of decline, it did not look to me like an imminent threat. I did not fight taking the tree down because I knew that with an arborist's letter, given the township's policy, the township would grant the permit. Regardless of the health of the trees, tree replacement is important, and I hope that we do not allow Rich Fuller to move forward without requiring that he replace those trees inch for inch. Thank you.
I've seen Catherine Miller. You are not Catherine Miller.
Hi. I'm standing in for Catherine. She couldn't be here tonight because she had prior obligations, so I'm here in her stead. My name is Tim, my name is Tim Yurk. I live at 20 Tenby Road. The proposed demolition at 101 Tenby is cause for great concern regarding the health and welfare of the citizens of Lanark. This is an unusually large residential home with neighboring homes in very close proximity. The age of this house indicates a high probability of both asbestos and lead paint. The EPA, Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, Department of Labor and Industry, OSHA, and many other federal, state, and local agencies regulate both of these toxins. In fact, the EPA regulates over 594 individually listed toxic chemicals referred to as the TRI list, Toxic Release Inventory. The general goal of legislation and regulations is to monitor and regulate pollution for the safety of citizens. This oversight is divided into three main areas: air quality, water quality, soil quality, and soil quality. The demolition of this house would substantially pollute the air through particle pollution and airborne toxins, including lead and asbestos. The Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, air quality, LNI, all share concerns about this demolition. We've been in contact with several people from these agencies, and what's, what's evident right away is that they really are highly motivated, and so, when, once we made this contact, it kind of stirred up a lot of activity. So, a lot of energy came back to us from these agents. They don't have anything else to do, and apparently, they're innovating along with the rest of the economy. They're using information systems and so forth, and they're testing out new frontiers, apparently. So, I happened to broach the idea of painting the house, painting my house, and I was told, got into a discussion, it's about a 50/50 chance that, that any of those old houses has lead paint, and the cost of doing the abatement properly just to paint your house now is around $40,000. They take this stuff real seriously. It almost scared me to have that conversation. This gentleman that we talked to at DEP was Jim Hurian. Jim and I have been in contact about this property, and he actually came out to visit the site on Tuesday, October 28. And he's like real busy, he's away on vacation this week, but he made time in his schedule, like he hustled out on October 28. And then he called again on, on October 29, and shared his concern about the impact of the demolition would cause for the air quality. And he's interested in assessing the situation and trying to quantify both lead and paint, and lead paint and asbestos. So, there was quite a correspondence with him. And then we were also in touch with Kevin Mclemore, who's a supervisor of inspectors at the air quality division of the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, and then there was another woman we were in touch with, Wendy Barkus at Labor. Could I have a couple more minutes, or?
Uh, no.
No?
No, you can have, you can have, you can have more time after the meeting's over, okay?
All right, thank you.
Stacy O'Leary?
Mr. Dave Schwartz will be...
Okay.
First of all, thank you very much for, for letting me speak. For those of you who know me, I'm not here to talk about rain gardens for once, so I'm sure you're all secretly cheering, but I'm here just to...
Can you just give us your name and, name and address?
I'm sorry, Dave Schwartz, 221 Davis Road. And I'm here just to kind of join the chorus here with what my neighbor said about Lanark neighborhood, and this is not just happening on Tenby Road, it's also happening right down my street, at 304 Davis Road. A developer recently came in, purchased the property, asked for a number of variances to, you know, to reduce the side yard clearances and everything, and instead, if I don't get these, I'll tear down the house and build two new ones. And, you know, that's happening, that's happening more and more now in Lanark. You know, people are going in there, tearing down houses and building these McMansions, and it's really beginning to hurt the character of our neighborhood. It's sort of death by a thousand knives. We're getting a lot more of that. And I'm here to speak sort of that figure issue. Now, I'll just tell you a brief story here. When my wife and I were first, you know, looking for homes, you know, about a couple years ago, we knew we liked older homes, weren't sure why. We actually went to new build ones just for fun, walked in there, had everything we wanted, right number of rooms, hardwood floors, bed bath, right down to level of detail with the crown molding, everything was perfect, and I hated it. I had no idea why. And I left, and I thought there'd be a big fight because I thought she would love it and everything else, and then I said, I braced myself, I said, "What'd you think?" She goes, "I hated it." I said, "Good, I did too, why?" She's like, "I don't know." And then I looked around, and I said, "Maybe it's because every home here is the same." And, you know, in Lanark, that's one thing that's very different. Every home there is different, everything is unique. You know, granted, no one's telling us doors in mine will close because they've been painted 10 times, I have to take roundabout routes to get into the house because doors are, are not consistent, but that's character, that's what, that's what, you know, that's why I moved in. And we're really beginning to start losing that. And I'm not anti-development, you know, I'm a planner, I understand development, but I think what we have to look at neighborhood-wide is a set of standards, some historic standards to keep the character of our neighborhood. You know, we're one of the original streetcar suburbs in, in Haverford Township. People used to cut a trolley out to Haverford Town, take Haverford and take the trolley again out to Oakmont, Haverford, and they'd go out in the country in their carriages to Haverford. But we are still one of the original streetcar towns, and we're really trying to maintain that character and trying to, and I guess I would ask the board to consider helping us to create a historic district, or, or a preservation district, or something to help us preserve the character of our neighborhood, to sort of, not to stop development, but to ensure that new development meets certain standards, make sure maybe they go for LEED certification, basically keep the uniqueness of our neighborhood, you know, as it is now. Not stop development, but then, as you said, maybe just to, to pause it a little bit, slow it down, and make sure that what's built is the right build, not just new build. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Dale Mas, I guess, it's Dale Nestler, they have it spelled incorrectly here.
Hi, my name's Dale Nestler. I live at 29 Tenby Road, directly across the street from 101. I was born in Lanark in 1964, and I went to Lanark School, and I moved to Drexel Hill, and I moved back to Lanark, and we moved into an old house that we worked on for almost 16 years now. I live on a subdivided lot with a new home behind me, and at the time, when we moved in, that's the house that we could afford with the subdivision, so the property, our price was lower. So, we bought a wreck of a house in Lanark, and we worked on our home 16 years. Lots have been subdivided all throughout the years that I've lived, 50 years, you know, in Lanark, around Lanark, lots have always been subdivided, houses have been built sporadically. But lately, I've never seen anything like what's happening to us here in Lanark. I almost feel like we're under siege or under attack, because everywhere you look in Lanark, you can't go anywhere without seeing something getting torn down, something getting built. There's noise, my father lived through three years of, two years, full years of construction with dirt, debris. Now he has a house located eight feet away from him, he looks at a stucco wall. It's, it's very difficult to, to look at this happen to Lanark. So, so the point here is, we're important to Haverford Town, Lanark is important to Haverford Town. We need to keep Lanark the way it is to the best of our ability and watch how far we take it to the point where we don't have Lanark anymore. So, I'd like to just say at this point that we need to look at what we're doing. We never had a house demolished in, in Lanark before. John Ryan and Fuller were together. The house across the street from my father was demolished, and, you know, again, I don't know too much about the condition of the house. I believe 101 can be saved, and I don't think the way to approach things is just to demolish them just because you, you don't know how to repair them. So, that's all I have to say.
Okay. Tony Van Veen.
Good evening. Tony Van Veen, 30 Tenby Road. I see 101 Tenby from eight rooms in my house. I see when I walk my dog, when I drive to and from work. 101 Tenby is one of the reasons why I love living in Lanark. In all of Haverford Town, Lanark is probably the only neighborhood that has stately mansions like 101 Tenby. This house is a signature home in the neighborhood, a visual anchor that has immense appeal as you walk or drive by, and now a developer wants to tear it down and put, put up two houses on that lot. Over the past few years, as Dale mentioned, number of houses in, lots in Haverford Town have been split, new homes have been built, wedged onto narrow lots between existing old homes, and nobody I've spoken to, none of the residents, have ever been happy about the splitting of these lots. I understand it's, it's been allowed, but it wasn't until 101 Tenby that a beautiful old home like this was targeted for demolition, and we can't allow that. Every neighborhood has its own character. Lanark's character is of elegant older homes on large oversized lots, sidewalks where our kids can walk to school, walk to friends' houses, of mature trees offering shade in the summer. 101 Tenby Road is one of the homes that creates that character in a way that no new house ever can, never mind two homes jammed onto narrow lots without side yards. What this is about is about preserving the spirit and the character of Lanark and of Haverford Town. Imagine if every double lot in Haverford Town was split, all the old homes were torn down, and some mature trees were felled in the process, as has already happened at 101 Tenby, as Gene talked about, and two new houses were built on every lot. Would you still want to live in that neighborhood? You might as well move to a new subdivision somewhere, because as much as you put up quality houses, the neighborhood would not have the character that it currently has and that Haverford Town and Lanark, in particular in this case, currently has. I understand the petition has been filed to demolish 101 Tenby Road and a separate one to split the lots, so what I'm here by requesting is at the very least that you postpone issuing such permits for 101 Tenby and the lots until the attorney we have retained has had an opportunity to review the deeds to make sure that it's actually allowed. And what I'm really asking for is that regardless of what may or may not be legally allowed, that you ultimately deny the permit for demolition of 101 Tenby Road and for the splitting of the lots. Let's preserve the character and the spirit of Lanark. Let's save this beautiful historic home. Let's keep our living space and our spacious lots in Lanark in existence, and let's listen to the will of the community, the 200 and some people who have signed a petition against the demolition of the home, the people here supporting it. Let us not go against that communal will, only to allow the enrichment of just two individuals, the Realtor and the developer. Thank you.
Finally, Dave Broman.
Mr. President, Mr. Fellow Commissioners, my name's Dave Broman. I am an attorney with Hi. Schwartz in Norristown, and I represent the neighbors, all of them you've heard from tonight, and many of whom couldn't be here tonight. I won't take too much of your time up because there's an Eagles game and you have a long agenda. I do want to reemphasize a couple of things. It's my understanding that a demo permit application has been submitted, although I understand it's not complete, because information in regard to ownership, both equitable and illegal, is not before you. I would also submit, based on what you've heard and given the fact this house was built in the early 1900s, 1904, I believe, the... the application's incomplete because it hasn't had an asbestos survey, and probably an abatement plan would need.